It's called this meeting to order for February 24, 2025, regular board meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion? Second. Do I hear a second? All in favor? Second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, board members, we've got several recognitions, a lot of our students out there waiting to come in. Jump right in. We're gonna start with our state champion robotics team. Pam Hickman and her robotics team come on the front here. This program has been years in existence. Pam has been the anchor for it, pioneered the work for a number of years. It's really cool to get to the state championship and picked out the right board meeting because Dr. Navin's gonna be talking about STEM. It's been more perfect timing. I want you to tell us about this team and introduce them, what they can do successfully.
Yeah, so we have three teams. This is our state winning team. We had two other teams. One was a fairly young team of freshmen. And going from the freshman, going from middle school to high school competition, it's very hard. So they need that year to kind of get ready. So they struggled this year, but they'll be better next year. But this group right here, they earned thirteen total awards. When I checked earlier today, it was eleven, but it upgraded to thirteen. And they've earned, I'm gonna let you guys talk about it because I'll forget something big. But they did earn the state championship. So that's our first state championship for Vestavia. So they were ecstatic. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and talk about their role on the team and what awards they win.
So I'm Ali, and I'm the team captain. I work on the 3D modeling thing as well as the team and project management. Our engineering notebook.
I'm Lindsay. I work on the programming with Ali and the programming documentation in our engineering design notebook.
I'm Jackson. I drive the robot and I build the robot and I commonly game strategies.
I'm Liam and I aid in building with Jackson Ali and I work on a notebook specifically with problems and solutions.
I'm Woods and I do a lot of design, like my petition and all that.
My name is Eric. I helped build the robot and I also do a book.
Their engineering notebook is a big deal. It's their project management notebook and it's about how many pages?
Six fifty, seven hundred.
Yeah, yeah. So it's pretty large and it's got all their CAD drawings in it, all their documentation and their programming, all their different builds, cycles documented in it. So they're great looking project managers.
Well, you have set the mark high for us. This is really cool, great way to get a meeting started off with state champion robotics team. I do want you to know that behind you is a former high school, Vestavia Hills, it's a math state champion. So I know he's got a particular interest in this.
Love the competition angle. So tell us, somebody tell us a little bit about what does the state competition look like? Is it a set of parameters we have to decide the robot? Is it a problem we have to solve? What's, how is it set up?
So every year there's a new game where there's like a challenge and it's like two on two where there's like each team, like we have one robot. And we're like grouped with another robot and we're trying to score more points than like the other teams. So like there's a red, there's a blue team. And so like throughout the whole year, like the local, state and the world competition, we're all playing that game. So you kind of get to do like a lot of research and reflect on like how you can improve on the same challenge. And then that means that like in like future years games, you can like look at previous years and like take lessons learned. And at the state competition, it's pretty competitive. There's a lot of really good teams.
And you built the robot ahead of time and sort of progressed the design over a set of weeks leading up to the tournament?
It is, it is. What I think is great about it is the team connection that has to exist to get the excellence that you get. There's no way you can do this without a really collaborative effort. That's quite the tell them proudly should be there.
I love the kind of real world, kind of set way to do it. We're gonna bring a team together and get everybody's different skill sets together to get a better product. It's much easier to do.
We have two seniors, like still sort of going to school. Have you decided?
I have not decided yet. Hopefully, I want to go to the U of B M sub program, which means I get to apply like engineering to medicine if they let me. Had the interview for it last week.
I'm going to Auburn University. Yes, I'm gonna try and do materials engineering and maybe minor in the nuclear power systems.
That should be pretty easy.
But mother, well, you know, it's one of my folks. People think that the only competitive genes are out there on the court or on the field. It's math team or robotics team, these folks compete. It's awesome to see.
It is. If you go to competition, you'll see that. It is intense and everybody is energetic. Beating up some competitors, we've got some more coming in. This is gonna be.
This is a musical choir, I'm a choir. Yes, and we have, we have thirteen total. There's a couple that couldn't come because of rehearsals and they didn't show today. So we have thirteen total. And a little bit about the process, the kids have to learn music, three pieces?
They've learned six.
Six pieces?
They auditioned on three of them.
On their, on their own. So this is not part of the curriculum that they cover in class. They have to learn that on their own and then they audition individually. And a couple thousand audition. And we always have a big showing and we were excited for them. And they go in April and it's at the BJCC. It's a weekend and it ends with a big concert. You guys want to introduce yourself and what grade you're in?
I'm Clint and I'm a ninth grade.
I'm Lucy and I'm an eleventh grade.
I'm AK and I'm a tenth grade.
I'm Kendall and I'm a ninth grade.
I'm Juliana and I'm a ninth grade.
I'm Maya and I'm in tenth grade.
All state choir. Congratulations.
Yep, tied with the fourth. Well, middle school.
So for middle school, we had eight total, some in Liberty Park and some in Zetts. And I will let them introduce themselves and say what grade they're in. They follow the same process and they will, it's the same event, right? They're just separated, yeah, the same event. And again, there's a lot that audition, these guys prepare on their own and then audition individually, which is pretty nerve wracking. So we're really proud of you. So will you tell us your name and what school you go to and what grade?
My name's Edgar. I'm in eighth grade, I go to Liberty Park.
My name is Dylan. I'm in the seventh grade and I go to Liberty Park.
My name is Karen. I'm in the seventh grade and I go to Liberty Park.
My name's Ethan. I'm seventh grade and I go to Liberty Park.
My name's Anne Marie. I am in eighth grade and I go to Liberty Park.
My name is Lydia and I am in seventh grade and I go to Liberty Park.
My name's Olivia Vandenberg and I'm a seventh grader at Zetts.
My name's Lucy West and I'm a seventh grader at Zetts.
Brent, you come and show an offer.
Yes. I just, I want you to know, board members, that this is an elite opportunity for all of our students, including our high school students. And not everybody makes it. It's not one of those everybody gets a trophy type of thing. And the weekend that they're spending, the Thursday, Friday for the high school students, even on Saturday, they'll spend anywhere from five to six to seven hours in rehearsal with a nationally renowned clinician who will come in and refine what they already started to learn. And then at the end, it culminates with a concert for the public and their parents and each other. It's really, it's really cool. We have our, our own state song. Anybody wanna stand up and sing it? Not everybody knows our state song, but all of these students learn our state song. And at our opening convocation, it's one of the coolest things to have all the middle school students and the high school students, including teachers like us who've learned it all these years, stand up and we sing, we practice our, the Star Spangled Banner, but also our state song Alabama. And it's just, it's beautiful. It's just, it was beautifully written, but it's really a cool moment. For a lot of these students, if it's their first time and they've never experienced that moment, it's really kind of, it's just really neat. And then a lot of the parent chaperones are always standing around and they're just, their mouths drop open and they're looking around and it's like, oh my gosh, this is really kind of cool. Because it doesn't matter where you sit, you can hear all of the parts because they're just, I mean, you have over a thousand students that are singing the song. It's beautiful.
You got family here, you guys, you come and show them, like? Well, I know you're Christian, love your family, you're supporting with all this. This is, I mean, I love to see our music programs, our band program, theater's about to come in, how important the arts are in school and that we continue to say it's really important. We have excellent instructors. I think that, that we know that. And our students just blow it away when they get on stage. So fantastic, congratulations. These are our thespians.
Yes, these are our theater students. And this is, they both, they were, and I'll just tell a little bit about the place they did. They did a duet and they placed first in the state. Y'all can introduce yourselves and what grade you're in and then tell us a little bit about the competition and the way they did.
I'm RJ Johnson. I'm a senior.
I'm Kate Till. I'm also a senior. And we did a scene that was between like a mother and daughter and they were navigating a new, like the daughter had to interview for a new job and it was a comedic scene. We competed at the Walter Trumbauer Festival, which is just a bunch of schools from Alabama and they all come together to compete in different categories.
It's really your state championship.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
They competed against over two hundred other people within the state for them to be first place. And they are both seniors, also both thespians and honors students.
Well, and you have a great, I'll just brag on your strut for a minute, writes the most eloquent, beautifully written words about all of the accomplishments your students have. I really appreciate that. It's really meaningful. But this is yet another example of how important the arts are. They're thriving in our schools and you guys are so talented. So congratulations on your state championship. Right. Okay, I want to also recognize, and Wit's already put a press release out about this, I want to let you know about the Zetts Middle School and Caviar Elementary and Dollar Ridge Elementary who applied for the fall and has received admission as being a school character. There are three of twelve schools in the state that were acknowledged for this and we've had three previous schools named. So, and I believe Caviar maybe is making their second round with school character. So congratulations. This is a process that I would say is rigorous because it takes a lot of work to get there. It's based on certain standards that the schools need and that they're working toward. And it's built around the core values that each school has. And if you attend one of the schools, you know what the core values are. We think it's very important, it's a commitment our system has made. And we're not perfect, but we use this as our mark to try to get to that place where we want to be. So congratulations, all of our schools will great work with that. Last thing I'll mention is not on the agenda, but I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that we recognized twenty-three students from the high school area this year for being national merit semifinalists. And they were named last week to be national merit finalists, which now they're in the scholarship hunt. They are about less than one percent of students in schools in the United States are nominated for this criteria. Twenty-three is incredible. That's the most we've had since 2006. I just want to tell you our students are just doing so well and they do great work. They represent our community well in so many different facets, as you've seen today. And we have great teachers that walk that path with them. So really, really fun time to get to share these things with you. Next month, I'll bring to you some of our athletic champions from the winter sports and we'll just continue this bit of good news for everybody. All right. That said, let's move to the financial statement, Courtney.
Good afternoon, board members. I've provided the January 31st, 2025 financial statements and check register for your review. As of January 31st, 2025, we have collected forty-two point seven percent of our budgeted adware and tax revenues compared to the seventy-three point three percent we received last year in the state. The variance is due to the timing of payments received from the county and city for our property adware and taxes compared to last year. For example, we got a large check last year at the end of January, but we didn't receive that same check until the middle of February this year. And that's the timing difference. So hopefully we'll catch up in February statements. In January, we earned sixty-six thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars on our interest in our investment and treasury slip account. And our total expenditures, transfers out in the general fund, as of January 31st, we're thirty-nine point five percent of the budget compared to thirty-eight point two percent last year. And all things being equal, we should be at thirty-three point three percent of our budget in the fourth month of our fiscal year. We are a little bit above that due to some annual payments that have already been made. And our monthly financial statements and check registers are available on our website upon board approval. And all bank accounts have been reconciled as of January 31st, 2025.
Courtney, board members, I recommend approval of the financial statement for January 2025.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the financial statement for January 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right. Item six, I recommend the board approve consent items and this is related to disposal of property and various field trips.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the consent items, including disposal of property and field trips. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Next item is a business item and it's a recommendation to approve a licensing agreement with Swag Apparel and Promotions.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the licensing agreement with Swag Apparel and Promotions. Do I hear a motion? Second. Do I hear a second?
Wit, off the top of your head, how many agreements do we have at this time?
This will make fourteen.
Okay. So a lot of companies do it in business with our trademark. We want to make sure it's being used appropriately. So this has been good for us. It doesn't necessarily yield a great deal of revenue, but it is an accountability piece to protect our trademarks. So I appreciate what's leaders on that.
And Dr. Freeman, I'm sorry to jump in, I do anticipate having probably one more agreement hopefully next month.
Wit, how do, people are interested in licensing that. How do they get into the process or what's the process for doing that?
They can contact our office up here and we can get the process started for them.
All those in favor of approving the licensing agreement?
Aye.
All right. I had amazed personnel and I recommend board members to accept the personnel as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to accept the personnel as submitted. Do I hear a motion? Second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. I'm staying on our STEM theme, science, technology, engineering and math. And you saw robotics earlier today. I asked Dr. Navin, Blair Navin at Principal High School to bring us a report about STEM. And I felt like she was uniquely qualified in that she has been principal in our elementary schools, our middle school and our high schools. So I thought she'd be a broad brush of what K-12 STEM education is about at our schools. And I appreciate you being here to do this, Blair. Take it away.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Freeman. And thank you, board, for having me and your interest in STEM education. Dr. Freeman did ask that I just provide kind of an overview of STEM K-12, what that looks like to us. And this is coming from a couple of different perspectives. I'm a mom first. I have a ninth grade daughter at the Reapart Middle School and a junior at Vestavia Hills High School. And so firstly, I am super interested in how we help facilitate well-rounded experiences for our kids. And as a mom, I'm very thankful that our kids have the exposures, my kids have the exposures and opportunities to go as deep as they want with any area and certainly this being one of them. It is my honor now to serve as principal of the high school and to really kind of see the culmination of the work that has been in progress. How are you back there?
Good.
I haven't seen you in a minute. Glad to see you. I didn't, I didn't realize you were there. Glad to see you. Just our students who've been at U-Learning for a few days. And so as a principal, I get to see the culmination of all of these awesome things at the high school, really kind of come to fruition. And then also certainly as an all-around STEM fan, I was in the classroom as a science teacher for many years and so getting to kind of see it through that lens too. And I'm excited to share more with you about really the way that STEM education is a vehicle for multiple different directions. So not just cultivating knowledge in these disciplines, but also habits of mind. And then the lesser discussed benefit of STEM education, the value that it holds with the work that we do with character. Honestly, I wish our robotics team or any of our arts groups were still here and standing here. And I would honestly kind of take out some of the little nuances of the things that they said to highlight from the engineering notebook to how well they even just stood and spoke, to the natural way that they interacted with each other in, from everything for how they spoke to the product that they produced. All of that is a culmination of the work that they have done for many years with education in general, but certainly specific to STEM. In our district, I was reading a superintendent's message from a couple of years ago, 2023. And at that point, we were really emphasizing two priorities and two goals related to STEM education. Those being boosting performance in math and science and certainly subsequent and other fields, technology and engineering. But it was also in an effort to further prepare our students for post-secondary experiences, college and career readiness. We know that many of our graduates pursue degrees in those fields or employment in those fields. And it really is incumbent upon us to prepare them to do such. But as the effort has grown and as it has evolved in our district, there have really been other benefits and other priorities that have surrounded this effort. So providing an opportunity for these passions to be cultivated in students and then also serving as a vehicle for this work with character. You know, we, we talk a lot at high school and we've heard mention of this at elementary and middle schools too, that our goal is to help support the development of well-rounded humans, well-rounded students, that those that have the potential to develop a pointed story. So a well-rounded student with a pointed story. But to do that well, we've got to provide those opportunities for the point to be sharpened. That regardless of whatever that particular and specific skill set or expertise or interest or passion is, we have to have opportunities that allow that edge to sharpen. So doing so in STEM-related priorities alongside every other discipline is important. And then the natural opportunities that this work provides to support character development in real and authentic ways. In our district, this is happening in a variety of ways. STEM in Vestavia Hill City Schools is twofold in that there are both explicit opportunities and implied opportunities. We're very thankful and excited that K-5 now has the opportunity for an explicit class as a special in all of our elementary schools. We have explicit classes with particular coursework and curriculum to support a very explicit approach in grades six through eight. And then certainly abundant course offerings that offer explicit instruction at the secondary level. But along that continuum, K-12, there's many implicit or implied learning opportunities as well that are infused in literacy avenues or the fine arts or any number of other ways. STEM education is hands-on, it's active. Someone challenged me the other day, you know, if students are just moving, but the brains aren't equally engaged, is that truly active learning? And that was a really healthy conversation because sometimes you'll step into a STEM-related conversation or a classroom lesson and there's stillness, but you can feel the heat coming from the brainpower that's being generated as they're thinking through a math lesson or a critical thinking scenario that they, they have before them. Our teachers, Dr. Freeman has referred to them as elite educators and they are certainly so in this field as well. There is abundant professional development that is poured into our STEM educators to ensure that they have access to and practice with the latest strategies for innovative STEM teaching. And it is beyond the classroom walls, the capacity for STEM to take place kindergarten through twelfth grade. While there are explicit priorities within our classrooms, there are ample extracurricular offerings, academic teams and other interest-based groups that exist K-12 to support students and teachers that are interested in and passionate about this work. So I've got a couple of scenarios that I just wanted to walk with you. If we're thinking of the K-12 continuum, that experience of a student from kindergarten to graduation, what does that really look like in practice? If we're thinking about the development of a student as a curious, a creative, a critically thinking and a collaborative person, what does that look like at each of these worlds? Well, imagine for me a kindergartner or a student in elementary school that is learning coding in the very earliest of stages. If you've heard your kids or other kids talk about Ozobots, that's a very popular tool, to be exposed to coding and to actually begin practicing, practicing that within their classroom. And then that may also look like students like in this picture that are modifying a structural design to better support the weight of an object. So they're trial and error, building something to help meet a challenge. What that might build to or translate to in middle school is that students deepening their coding knowledge through content in a specific app creator class. Or perhaps they are modifying their robot, like we heard mention of with some of our students today. They're modifying that robot to maximize performance in their next competition. Well, what does that translate to at the next level? It translates to the students that we had with us this afternoon. It translates to the first state championship in robotics for Vestavia Hill City Schools. It translates to students selecting a brand new course offering that we'll have next year in AP Computer Science A or Java. We've had AP Computer Science principles and the demand has increased such that we're going to be able to support an additional section of an AP course. So along that continuum, that's what that fields should grow or builds to develop to be. Another example may be taking an elementary school scenario and students exploring their five senses through a taste test lab. Or perhaps they've huddled together on the carpet and they're having a morning meeting and talking about the importance of playground safety and what that means in the classroom community. And how that translates to life in middle school student experience, the continuum of that STEM experience, might be debating innovative healthcare concepts in a seventh grade science class. Or a STEAM day presentation that targets an element of the human body. And students designing a simulation or a scenario to show how an organ system works with another organ system. And they've worked with a partner or a team to do that. And then beyond that, in the secondary range of nine through twelve, what that might look like is our students, more than ever this past year, who interned dozens of local healthcare partnerships through their culmination of their sports medicine pathway. Or performing independently a virtual surgery on the animatage table in their health sciences class. You know, they don't, they're not able to just land those experiences successfully. It is a foundational building process, a continuum of the skill development that equips students to be able to do that at higher and higher and higher levels. And then lastly, as I've mentioned, the exciting element of STEM, as could be with many different disciplines, but there's a natural capacity to do it in STEM, is the work with character development. You may see rise or the picture that's here and think, how in the world does that relate to STEM? But when we think of the habits of mind and the necessity of collaboration in critical thinking and in problem solving, it equips our students to do things that we may not explicitly correlate with STEM-related fields. So for example, let's imagine that students have kind of huddled around the carpet again or they're talking in a fourth grade class about an engineer's contributions to society based on an innovation they develop. These are read-aloud questions that our elementary school teachers expertly navigate every single day. And students have very direct and intentional exposures to those kinds of conversations and those topics. So they may have been talking about that or how that inventor or engineer or mathematician's work reflects one of their school's core values. And then later, as that student grows and develops, they may find themselves able to serve as a peer helper in a middle school scenario. And they're utilizing those healthy collaborative, collaborative skills that were fostered earlier to help lead groups, groups in lab experiences or other scenarios. And then beyond that, what that might look like at the high school level, are students very independently communicating with principals. Thank you, PS principals, for your support of all the Jeep and Tinkering prize. But our students initiating that communication with partners in the district and beyond to independently organize and implement fundraising efforts for philanthropic effort. Creative problem solving, brainstorming strategies that they make happen very naturally because it's been scaffolded, mentored and practiced over time. And that might not necessarily be something that you would think is a STEM-related outcome, but it is certainly the result of curiosity. but it is certainly the result of curiosity and creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration, all of which are emphasized through STEM in our district at increasingly high levels. So here's some images of that. I've mentioned before that I'm super thankful for the opportunity to get to live a lot of school in a short amount of time, because when I see students doing different things or having different experiences, I kind of can zoom out and see what that looked like at different grade levels, and I'm thankful for the chance to do that. All of us as administrators kind of look at that, what's developmentally appropriate and what's developmentally next. And STEM is a huge, huge example of that lens and that continuum. So you can see how this translates at different levels, that the earlier and the more frequently that our students have experiences and exposures to learn and to practice these skills, the more natural they become, to the point that they're able to just have opportunities for application and mentorship, which is the goal, from that explicit instruction to that independent execution over time. So here's some snapshots of what's that, what that looks like at these different levels. And again, from the earliest phases to students that are actively and independently pursuing these things on their own. It's been a joy to watch the evolution of STEM education in our district. It is a joy to get to watch the culminating pieces of it along those seasons and to really see what that rises to be. So for example, if we take that robotics group, and I mentioned that to begin with, but they're just an example of many different scenarios, the things to listen for, the things that they mention, the design notebook of 680 to 700 pages, the robot design that they have developed based on a scenario they could not predict, and that they have practiced through grit and perseverance all season long. And the other piece to that is Ms. Hickman and Dr. Fisk, their sponsors, have to be completely separate from the team in all of the decisions they make. They can guide, they can question, they can facilitate, but they can't assist. So by that time, they're all working independently to execute the skills that have been building over time. And that's a group of, a small group of students who are reflective of a bigger movement, and that's exciting to see. All but one of them actually also participated in robotics at the middle school level. And two of them either are currently or have previously mentored our middle school teams, I was asking over there. And so it's a generational piece that's happening and growing and developing, and that's really exciting to see. So I just want to thank you, board, for your continued, your initial and your continued support of STEM, because getting to see the development and the exponential achievements that are happening is very exciting, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and some of you came to a STEM class earlier this year, and we've seen some of the operations kids are involved in, and it really is just about that. So I really appreciate that, Blair.
I'm thrilled to see the emphasis on what has been, pointed emphasis for several years, we can kind of see that in growth. And I think it's been a great example today to show, sorry, National American Finalists, or the thespians, or the choral group, the robotics team, and what we're doing in STEM, just to show that we really are trying to meet students where they are in all facets of their attention. We want parents to come along beside us as we do that, and if you've got ideas of where we can be better, then let us know. Because we really do want to help students where they're gifted and where their strengths and interests lie.
Appreciate that, thanks for the board. I do also want to commend Blair Navin for being a leader in what we want to do as a district in terms of being the trusted source of information for what's happening in our schools. And we did a communication audit process back in the fall, and it really was something that rose to the top as we wanted to be that source. And Blair's had to do that the last few days regarding the plumbing issue at the high school. I do want to bring you up to speed with that and let you know what she has been communicating to all the parents and students, which are the facts of the matter, I would say, and I appreciate you doing that. We did, of course, last Wednesday have a significant plumbing issue develop at the high school. Basically, in the original campus construction underneath what is the senior patio in the middle of the campus, there was some obstruction that we attempted to get out by different means that the plumbing contractor uses to do that and wasn't successful. We made the decision Thursday to take a new line and run it through the senior patio independent of the existing one. And that process started really in earnest Thursday. I cannot say for sure what the obstruction is, because it's under a building where plumbing is. But I can tell you that it's likely either something that accumulated over time, or it could be that the terracotta pipe that was constructed in the 1970s could have collapsed. So we don't have concerns about foundations of a building, any kind of concern such as that. But it could be one of those things, that's just part of it with infrastructure and buildings and plumbing that's underground. You don't know it until it happens. So it happened, we've been working on that new line, and we've got three contractors on site doing various things, excavating and running lines, and we are still working on that now. Blair's, one of the parents will have another update around six o'clock about where our steps are this evening and what we plan to do tomorrow. So what I can tell you is the run of line, it's taken 250 to 300 feet of line, it's taken a run by a six-inch pipe. And when you're having to go under, through concrete and drop down six feet and go through different concrete obstructions, different conduits, it is a very tedious process, but it's so it's significant. It's not the first time we've had lines stop up in the school and told us to be backed up, but when it backs up basically your entire campus, and that's where we are. Obviously, we can't have 1,600 kids, 200 staff members on the site when there's no bathrooms available. So that's where we are at this point, Blair's communicated that to parents, and we'll have another update at six o'clock about where we stand heading into tomorrow. Anything you want to add to that? No. Yeah, all right, so Tony, anything you want to add?
He says before he goes to bed, I'm going to be sure.
Yeah, we're going to try to be optimistic.
Be more optimistic, that's right.
I do want to commend the district, in particular the main campus, Tommy, and all the work you're doing, because the speed with which these decisions have to be made, the ability for not just our teachers, administrators, but also our families and students to adapt, has been very impressive, and I appreciate that. It's not easy, and I know that for families, sometimes it's a little bit of a change of schedule, could be a little bit of a burden, less so at the high school than at the elementary schools, but we appreciate everybody's understanding and flexibility on that as well.
It goes without saying, we want our kids in school. I think we agree with parents about that, and kids as well, we want to get them so quick as we can, we will. So expect, parents can expect enough at about six tonight.
With that, we are time for public comment, is there anybody here who'd like to make a public comment?
Yeah.
One sec, let me read this one. So before making a public comment, you should stand and give your name and your address. The presentation should be as brief as possible, and no event shall set your dress exceed three minutes. Speaker, you may make statements about your particular concern with school operations and programs. In this public session, however, we will not hear personal complaints against particular school personnel or against any person connected with the school system. Other means are provided whereby the board may consider and dispose of legitimate complaints involving individuals and employees within the school system. Further, the board does not typically respond to comments during public participation. So with that.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Pat Ruiz, I live at 34, as a very part of the place, Chavines region. I'm not going to give a speech, I sent an, just I sent an email to all of you, and just, we're all going to ask you to be included in minutes. And only thing I'll say, well, it was about the state legislature, Alabama State Legislature, in the efforts to require us to put the Ten Commandments in every school, and 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 I've we're fitness, we're fitness.
Do you get it, Mr. Boone?
And, oh, and I was just going, only just going to ask, are you ready and willing to push back against such efforts?
Yes, as we mentioned, we generally do not respond to public comment, but I'm happy to talk to you after the
Oh, we don't answer questions, I was just, I didn't misunderstand, I was, I didn't know whether to do it, whether we ask questions. I can talk.
I mean, you can talk.
I'm going to talk to some of them privately later.
Okay.
And then it's my presentation.
Thank you for your email and for being here today. With that, we're at the end of our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So.
Second.
It's like.
Oh, okay.